Scott Pet Products is your local expert on developing, producing, and distributing top-quality pet products. We are currently seeking motivated individuals to join our team. Benefits include insurance after 90 days, PTO, 401K, four-day work week, discounts on products, opportunities for advancement, and so much more. Interested applicants may apply online at scottpet.com or by visiting our Rockville location to fill out a paper application. We look forward to hearing from you.
All right, for the night, I think we'll just have a moment of silence for our deputies that got wounded and there've been several people passed away in town, so just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You two got your minutes for the previous meetings? Were there any changes or questions on any of that?
No, I made the motion, accept the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Forgot to put the dates on there, but it was for July 14th, July 20th, July 27th, 8:5 and 8:12.
Okay, claims and warrants, end of the month, July, is $179,000. $96.51 cents. August 29th meeting, $245,000, $292.35. Motion approved those.
Make a motion.
August 29th.
August 29th.
I know you read that.
Yeah.
I didn't hear yet.
Do what?
The August 29th. Date?
It should be 19.
19.
On your notes. I'll make a motion to accept that with the change of August 19th meeting.
Second.
On favor? Bank reconciliations, utilities, $2,403,714.77. For the town, $1,157,696.15. Customer deposit, $34,790. And payroll, $2,900.24.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Okay.
Payroll warrants for the week, $722, 729, 85, 812, and 819.
And that's for $36,568.82.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Sign those.
Yes.
We got one billing adjustment. For $1,609.78. Weeks are pre-approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Skip, you're on the front row. Paul wouldn't move his honor for you, huh?
Yeah, it's all good. Uh, see, stat, I've been on the truck. We thought it was gonna be delayed about 20 days. Ended up being delayed about five days. It'll be ready on Monday, the 23rd. So, we're trying to get a, because of the delay change, we, other people have made plans for next week. So, we're trying to scramble to get a couple guys to go up through the inspection. Once we're done with the inspection, it'll go down to Florence, Kentucky. It'll get some work done on it down there. Ask for contract labeling rights. Then they'll deliver app on their completion down there to us. So, we're trying to get some guys together to go down either late next week. Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday. They're paying for the hotel and all that. So, that's on them. I'm just trying to get some guys to go up and do the inspection on it.
Getting there, huh?
It's close. The white is at the end of the tunnel.
As long as it don't them out again, right?
Exactly. That's pretty much 115 rolls-ish for the year.
A bunch.
So, we'll probably hit 140, 150, not more this year.
Well, just curious, what's, do you have like any idea what the average is?
Our average is around 130.
130.
So, we'll probably eclipse that this year.
Probably 80% of our first responding. 80, 20.
That's about every year, too, huh? Yeah. That's all I got. Appreciate y'all. Big floor goes forward Monday morning. Have that AC compressor installed. I got a quote back for some promotional items today for National Night Out and the Halloween pranks in the park if we end up having that. So, the police department will have the stuff we need for the kids there. Outside of that, I think we pretty much covered everything last week update-wise.
When's the night, Night Out?
September 3rd. I don't, don't quote me on it. It's first, couple days of September, first Saturday, September 3rd. That's it.
Fourth on Saturday.
Yeah, it's the day of that boat race.
I haven't seen it out yet.
I haven't seen it, I mean, the paper. That'll be next Wednesday, probably.
Because that weekend is, wow.
The fourth Sunday, September 4th on Saturday.
It's usually Thursday, but I don't, they may change it. I just haven't seen it.
Anyway, thank you guys and fire department and Yon.
First Tuesday in September.
So, that's second.
Paul. You look confused.
Yeah, I am a little bit. Diana's sick. She called, we got a whole Jim Meese about Plank Road, and then I called Randy Norman, talked to him. And basically same thing. He told me he's watching the paper from yesterday. It's got 350 and then Plank Road. So, it's dangerous in bigger equipment. And I kind of used that as school bus and fire truck as an example. If we'd gone that way with fire truck to Sawmill the other night, there's a very good chance we could have a wreck. Cause you gotta get clear over that and then get around it, so.
But that is definitely county to take care of, right?
Yes.
Because we received a call from someone in the courthouse, and that's what we told them. She called back, said she called the county and was told different.
Now, there's a mark in the road there where it changes flat top is where the county takes over. Randy knows that.
Yeah, they always have in the pound.
It's bad. Yeah, part of what I don't think anything's changed since last meeting, so.
I went down last Sunday and kept dirt at the stop sign and stuff. At least you can see, but as far as it hanging out, out the center, but made it worse. You can see to the west.
I think that's all I had.
You can see now to turn out on the ground.
Yeah, I went down that Sunday. Why the traffic slowed down on that road and it was good.
We got a resolution we need to prove tonight. It's 2020-08-02, and that's a resolution for the change of commissioners for input.
I make the motion to accept Resolution 2021-08-02.
Second.
On favor, aye.
We got just needs this President Day. President Day. Congrats. I just need to put my seal on it and make copies and then...
Mail it.
Do you want me to mail it to them or?
We're down to a week, so.
I thought you said something about hand delivering it, is why I'm asking.
Is that feasible, Jay?
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll tell you what, I'll scan it and get it over there, and then you can hand deliver with the hard copy. Cause they may not get it by the time you're meeting them.
That's next Friday.
The way the mail is.
Okay, that's now, you got, Bob?
No, just thank everybody for what everybody tried to do. Well, for volunteers sometimes. I think that's everything anymore. Hand pull.
I talked to Chad Jenkins yesterday, and he's working on the contract for us. He said it'll probably be ready for signatures and stuff in October. And if there's anything that we think we want to change or add or do different, need to let him know, so.
Do you ever decide on a dollar amount?
On our part, no. What was it, Staff?
Is that $100,000 for three years on electric depreciation? I thought he needed to know that before.
Yeah. Yeah, I told him I'd get back with him if there's anything comes up. I'd say leave the amount the same and the government's left and the more we can do it.
Yeah, cause they're only using what they use.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
I said they was working this year on some of those leftovers.
Yeah, some of the leftovers last year.
Yeah, cause they get busy, they can't be much neither. But they are changing several parts.
Yeah.
So, you're doing $100,000 for the next three years?
I'm considered doing maybe 80.
Yeah, cause your depreciation's down to 31, 360.
They only charge what? You know, their hourly stuff, so that's just a...
But let's do the 80 in the book.
Yeah, we can do the 80. Yeah, I just, that might help to extend this out a little bit. I'm not trying to, you know, we know it wouldn't be forever, but, you know, given what you have in there, what's been spent so far, might be able to stretch it a little bit if you went to 80. And might be, you know, it doesn't, electric depreciation doesn't, hasn't been able to generate a lot of revenue lately. So, my recommendation would be just go a little, it's not anything against them at all. It's not, you know, that, it's just maybe plan for, if something comes up, we could obviously add. But, but maybe they could scale back a little bit on what they're thinking for the next three years. We still be getting, you know, that's, that, I think that would, we did with $100,000 or something, maybe $150,000 after three years. Hopefully by then, a lot of things are taken care of and see where you're at.
Yeah, basically we're down to the poles now. They got that changed out to the south end, so.
I mean, I know other stuff will come up.
Yeah, yeah, we got them on standby, so.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion for the 80 for the next three years.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Is that okay, you did? You felt so good?
I don't think I have anything tonight. I think I just put you a little note in there about the fire items will be advertised in the next month's paper. To cut that word in thanks for Scott's help.
Sure makes sense when I wrote it. I'm not sure, you're gonna get my people confused about what am I doing?
Yeah, it makes sense.
I had a couple things. I, I sent you guys an email kind of late this afternoon, except for Bobby. We got, I got another quote for the cemetery. I asked the, I asked for three quotes. I got one, it was $17,000. It's from Myers Engineering in Terre Haute. They're very good. The other two, I told him I needed it by Thursday. So, one of them got it to me Monday, the other one I haven't ever heard from, so. The one I got from Monday, I wanted to talk to him for sure to with you. It's only for $7,000, $7,100. And I, kind of worried me that maybe he didn't understand what we were needing. So, I called and spoke with them today, Deckard Engineering, they're out of Crawfordsville. And he, he was very nice, and I think he understood what we needed. And he said they'd done some cemetery plating for like Attica, he mentioned. He does, he's done some for the Amish. Now, those aren't very big, but for the most part, but they, they have cemeteries that he's plating. And for what it's worth, when I talked to Myers, I asked the guy from Myers about Deckard, and he said, yeah, they're good. He said, we've worked with them and, and they're good, and I understand, you know. And I asked the guy from Deckard about Myers, and he said, oh yeah, they're good. So, mutual admiration society, but, but I've never worked with Deckard, so I didn't, didn't know. That Myers can get to it faster. Myers could have it done before the year's out. Deckard, it will not be until next spring, April, or May before they're able to do it. They're that backlog. So, it's a $10,000 price difference if you want it faster. And I don't, I can't speak necessarily to Deckard's work other than Myers thought highly of him. And they were, somebody else told me, you know.
They're, they're on the same page as what they're bidding on?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he's gonna, they would, they would do a boundary survey of the boundaries of the cemetery, and then they would plat lots for the next, the, the three sections that need to be opened up. He was very, he had asked me a question, and I, I had to ask him what he meant, having to do with the number of markers that they would leave, monuments that they would leave. Cause he said, well, we want to be sure, and, and Myers had that in their stuff too, but I didn't totally understand it. Cause they're gonna put this on map somewhere, but when you go out there to actually start putting the graves in, you need to know where you're at. So, they would put permanent, you know, pins and whatever, I don't, you know, surveyor stuff out there. So, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, when somebody needs to see where the, now, they're not gonna put one necessarily on every row. He said, we'd probably put some every so many feet along the edges, maybe one in the middle, row in the middle, so you can help get yourself lined up. Basically, so you can do things.
Where you can pull off of them.
Yeah, yeah, and...
So, this one on Deckard says it excludes the permitting, the application fee and all that. Is that the same with Myers?
Yeah, and, and I don't think there'd be any permitting or application. The only fees I think that would be outside would be, we'd have to have some stuff recorded, but that's not gonna run very much. And I make sure, I said, we're gonna get drawings on it. He said, oh yeah, 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 yeah. He said, uh, he said, actually, it's good that we're doing it this way. He says, cause sometimes we get people who just want us to do the plat, and says, and or do the plat, I have to do a boundary survey. He said, so, the fact you're having us just, you know, do it all at once, he said, is, it saves us a little bit of money.
I was just wondering if that's why it was so much cheaper.
I know, it does worry me too a little bit, but I sent them both the same thing, told them both what we needed. Myers, Myers, Myers always stuff, their always, their stuff always looks nice. I mean, they, they, they do a nice job. But he told me, the guy from Myers, Matt Morris, he said, yeah, we've worked with them, they're good, they're good surveyor.
I wonder if they'd consider lowering that quote any? Cause the issue is, we only have Terry till about May. And I'd love to have this all wrapped up.
Well, they said they, what did the, Deckard said that, uh... I mean, is it in what I sent you? Maybe it was in his email. I think I just forwarded it to the email maybe. I thought it said that they would, could start in April and be done in May.
For Deckard or for?
Deckard. I sent it to you this afternoon.
It says, currently scheduling new jobs in April of 2022. And would have an anticipating completion date, let's see, uh, May 1st of 2022. That's what I see on here. Calculated setting nine to 10 monuments for each new cemetery section along with the boundary survey. We are currently scheduling new jobs in April of 2022.
That's what I saw. They wouldn't, it'd be right around the time Terry was done.
Yeah, it'd be done completion by May 1st.
I don't know that Myers could cut that much out. I mean, I might be able to, but, but my, I told them, we had, I told them I had another bid that was way lower.
Like you guys said, what concerns me is the big difference.
Right, that's why I was asking at the bottom of the Deckard one, it stated without that. I wanted to know if that meant Myers included that, if we needed those fees, it was already wrapped up in there, but...
In, in some respects, I don't entirely know what, I, I told them what we needed, but, you know, it's hard for me to judge. It's like if somebody gives me a quote on a new server or something, I, I don't know really what I'm totally looking at. But, um, you know, the boundaries, even if you just got the boundary survey part of it out of it, you'd still be about the same as what, what Myers wanted charged just for the survey. And that's hard to, I mean, that, that's what it is, is what it is. So, my, it does worry me that there's that big of a price difference between them, but it may just be that, you know, they're, they're in Crawfordsville and, and they're a little cheaper. And they've done this, I, I don't know that Myers has done a cemetery plating. I didn't even think to ask them that. I know they do a lot of commercial survey work, cause I've worked with them on a lot of stuff. They do work for everyone in Terre Haute. Not everyone, but a lot of projects. But we can wait, and I mean, I, you know, it's up to you guys. I know, I know Terry's not here, and, and neither is Diane. And I told them, I said, you know, if we have, if there's any questions or anything, he said, yeah, sure, just email me, cop to town board.
I'll table it till our fifth meeting, or...
Next meeting.
Next meeting, then we'll say yes or no.
When I was at Nucor for almost 18 years, they shot every elevation, every project we ever, Deckard did, and we never had the first issues. I'm not necessarily endorsing them, but I've never had a bad experience with them either, so.
They was up there when I worked construction up there. Seemed like quite often.
That was the only company they used.
They're getting ready to do more up there too. Okay, let's table it till the project.
Yeah, I know Diane also very...
Yeah, I've been here and...
I spoke, I talked to Rick Patton.
Yes, table.
About 12:45, North Jefferson. He is the, I'm not even gonna talk about the other adjoining property owner. So, he, since he isn't adjoining property owner, and he is willing to remove what's there. I told him I would confirm with you guys again that that was okay, and that he, if he got the stuff off there, we would deed him that property. He said he thought he could have it off in 60 days. Probably less, he said, but I said, well, why don't we say 60? And I said, let me talk, talk to the town board, make sure you guys are still okay with that.
Yep. Kind of move, moving on it. Ask him if he will come and cut it. I mean, maybe he won't get together and move right, but get it cut.
I'll let him know tomorrow. Now, on 12/63, um, my suggest, my recommendation there is that we go through the process of, you think of this condemning the house, which is sort of what we'd be doing. I, I call it something slightly different, but I spoke with the building inspector for the town of, or city of Brazil. They have, they have a person who, that's what she does, her name's Kara. Last name starts with an S, and I can't remember what it is. So, I called and talked to her Monday too, and to see if she'd be willing. And she said, well, let me, you know, I need to check with my boss and, and, um... So, she called me back today, and I wasn't in the office, and left a message and said she, she'd be able to do it. So, what I told her is we'd start with just an exterior visual inspection. If she thought it was severe enough that she could condemn it just based on the exterior, what she saw, fine. If she needs to get inside though, we would then have to go to court to get permission to get a warrant, basically, to, to go in and do inspection inside though. And if that's the case, we'll do it. And then we will go through the process of, of, uh, I know we did this order before, but some things have changed since, and they have made some improvements. I know it doesn't seem like it, but they did fix some things up. It was 18 months ago or something. And we always had in our back pocket at that time that we were in the process of getting a tax deed to it. So, they are, they have not paid their taxes for it's work, but it's not, it would take us a long time to go, wait for that to circle back around and come back to us, and they could always come in and pay it at the last minute. So, this is going to be a, if, everything went really quick, 60 days. If it, if it goes, if it gets more complicated, if we do have to go to court for warrants and such, it would take more.
I'd say move forward with it.
You too.
You know, it's, I know it's a, I know it's a bad problem. I know it's a bad problem, but it's, it's gonna be an expense too, and, and, you know, but at some point...
We'd have to do something.
But it's also, you know, there is a lot of, there's a lot of due process involved, because we don't just want, wherever you live, to be able to come in and say, hey, we're gonna come in, tear your house down if you don't do this, and you got 10 day, two days to do it. I mean, now that, that's the story of dictatorships and, you know, stuff like that. So, we have a lot of process that has to be done in order to do this. But I'll call her tomorrow and let her know, and she'll probably get up.
Now, if, so the house condemned, and they're notified and all that's done, then we gotta tear it down and then, but they retain the property.
Now, there would be a lien placed on that property for the cost of demolition, which they would never be able to act. Unlikely that they'd ever be able to pay that. In which case, we could end up possibly with the property through the tax sale process like we have some others. But, you know, that would be, again, down the road. And, and I can tell you about one situation like this where it took a long time. There was a house on Vine Street in Clinton, across from the playground and central school. And eventually the city acquired that property because we cleaned it up so, and the, the structure itself was not great. It wasn't like as bad as this one, but it was just junked up all the time, and, and we ended up getting it. It took a couple of years, we acquired it, we sold it to the adjoining property owner, and they tore, well, we tore it down. They kind of pushed it over, and they built a nice new garage on it. But it, it's just slow. It's just slow. So, there are some good things that can happen, but it just sticks to them. And this one is, the fact that they redued it at the tax sale at the last minute, really, through our, through my plan.
Yeah.
Through a big portion of my plan, cause I, I thought we'd get it that way. We did get the one at least, and we're gonna get it taken care of. I think Rick Patton will get it cleaned up, and, and that one will be down, so.
One step at a time, but yeah, keep moving forward on it.
All right, well, I'll let her know, and we'll probably give you an update next morning.
Thanks for your effort.
Oh, it's all right. I know it's been on my, you know...
Burner.
Burner, but it's, 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 I keep figuring that something will, you know, give, and they just, they...
Thank you for your time.
We can tell people that the lawyer's working on it. We can tell people that the lawyer's working on it.
And they, they're not here because one of those property. Sister Patrick, I know her services are the night.
Well, let her know that. She got her attention and work.
Okay.
We'll have building inspector out there next week or two.
Okay, the next month meeting will be, the project meeting will be on the second, and the regular meeting on the sixteenth.
Well, with that, things at night.
Yeah, okay.
But we have the budget stuff.
We can't.
No, that's all right.
We could, but it'd be a.
You know.
No, I forgot about that, that's fine.
Well.
Leave it on that.
Are you going to concert?
To the.
National Night Out.
Next one.
That's on the second, probably.
But that's fine, we have to do what we got.
Yeah.
I forgot about the budget.
Yeah, that occurred.
Yeah, just leaving it on.
Does it last till eight o'clock?
Yeah, next meeting is September.
Second.
Second, six o'clock.
Special session.
Special.
And that's the, yeah, okay. Anything else? Any backup?
You're up, Dave.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I said that. Thank everybody for coming.